Call this meeting of the common council. Order and roll call please.
Alderman Horn.
Aye.
Fire? Here.
Peachey?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Bramble? Lars?
Here.
Tully?
Here.
Crowe.
Alderman Bramble and Alderman Crowe sir excuse this evening. At this time I want to entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so, we ask that you come to the podium and state your name and address. All right. Move on tonight. Okay, move on to appointments. We're just gonna have one appointment tonight for the Housing Authority. The one for Utility Commission will come back through consideration at the next meeting. So I would ask for your approval of Dr. David Bull to be Housing Authority.
I would so move.
Move is your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Mars. Discussion. On a voice vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, no. It's unanimous, thank you. Next we move on to proposed ordinance number two dash nineteen, an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter one thirteen of the municipal code concerning the licensing and control of domesticated and non-domesticated animals. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. The city of Jefferson, Wisconsin hereby ordains as follows. Section one, section one thirteen dash two fees is hereby amended to include the following. One thirteen dash two fees, this provision is amended to exempt service animals as determined in article six of any fee otherwise imposed therein. Section two, sections one thirteen dash twenty-four, one thirteen dash twenty-five, one thirteen dash twenty-six, one thirteen dash twenty-seven, and one thirteen dash twenty-eight hereby created as follows. Do this length and move reading a complete text of this ordinance. A copy is not filed at the office of the city clerk and is available for public inspection.
I so move. It's been moved, sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Horn.
Just to be clear, we aren't repeal and replacing, we're just amending chapter one thirteen dash two. I think Sarah restated that, and that should've been in the title.
Is that clear? Any questions about that? Okay. Let's take that as well. Next discussion.
And this was changes by the request of the chief, correct?
Yep. Any questions or comments?
So then, we're just trying to bring this up to date. And really by adapting the state statute, we're limiting the type of wild animals that can be legally owned within our city limits. Fair enough, chief?
That's fair enough, absolutely.
Chief, no other questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name.
Alderman Fire? Aye. Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Chief Members, thank you. Proposed ordinance number three dash nineteen, an ordinance to amend and modify the existing provisions of chapter two sixty-five of the municipal code concerning winter parking restrictions. Alderman Horn, please, for first reading.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson ordinance number three dash nineteen. Section one, parking restrictions. Winter parking effective dates, on all streets in the city from November first through March thirty-first, parking shall be permitted on one side of the street only as defined within the section. Page one, alternate side twenty-four hour parking rules. Parking shall be permitted from six P.M. daily and shall be in effect until five fifty-nine P.M. the following day, twenty-four hours. On even calendar days, vehicles shall park on the even side of the street which have even house numbers until six P.M. On odd calendar days, vehicles shall park on odd side of the street which has odd house numbers until six P.M. After six P.M. daily, vehicles shall be required to move to the alternate side of the street based on the following day's date. Exceptions. Excepting on those streets and areas where parking is prohibited between two A.M. and six A.M. or within a limited parking zone, which shall include designated thirty-minute, one-hour, and two-hour parking areas, between the hours of nine A.M. and five P.M., vehicles shall obey posted directed parking regulation signs. Authority to ticket and remove. If a vehicle shall be parked in violation of this subsection, the police department shall ticket the vehicle and may order a tow from the street at the owner's risk after the vehicle has been ticketed. Refined for violating this subsection shall be as prescribed by the municipal court bond in effect, plus the towing charge for each occurrence. Section two, this is a first reading, no action required.
Thank you. Next we move on to tonight's consent agenda, resolution number sixteen. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City of Jefferson, resolution number sixteen. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for June fourth, twenty nineteen, is hereby adopted. A, vouchers payable for May twenty nineteen in the amounts of one hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. Payroll summary for June seventh, twenty nineteen, in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. B, we had our council minutes from June fourth, twenty nineteen, of the common council. C, we had a street closure for Emmanuel United Methodist Church. This is for their Vacation Bible School. This will run from Monday, June twenty-fourth to Friday, June twenty-eighth, from eleven A.M. to five P.M. D, we have licenses as approved by the Regulatory Committee. One, we had operators licenses for new and renewal applicants. We had two special class B licenses. The first one was for the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce. This is for them operating at the Jefferson County Fair from July tenth to July fourteenth at the fairgrounds. And B, we had the Lions Club Goat Fest. This will be July seventh, twenty nineteen, down at Jefferson Rotary Park. And then item number four, we did approve the cigarette license renewals. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Mars. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. No opposed.
Alderman Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Alderman Horn?
Aye, abstaining from section D to B, Lions Club Goat Fest.
And Alderman Fire?
Aye.
Yes, it's right. In favor with one extension. Thank you. Resolution number seventeen, a resolution acknowledging the review of the twenty eighteen CMAR. Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, upperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number seventeen. Whereas it is a requirement under a Wisconsin Plutent Discharge Elimination System, WPDES, permit issued by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the city of Jefferson to file a compliance maintenance annual report, CMAR, by June thirtieth annually for its wastewater treatment system under Wisconsin Administrative Code, N.R. two zero eight. Whereas it is necessary to acknowledge that the governing body has reviewed the compliance maintenance annual report. Be it therefore resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the common council hereby informs the Department of Natural Resources that said council has reviewed the compliance maintenance annual report for the calendar year two thousand and eighteen. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fire. Discussion. Todd, welcome.
Mayor, council members, same deal we do every year. Did very well again this year. Straight A's. We looked at the last page of the report. Basically generated low points, which ends up being a hundred percent on all the grades. So we had no violations, no exceedances, and no overflows. Last really screening well right now. Few changes from last year. We got our switch our phosphorus chemical to baric sulfate to alum. It's going very well. We're probably gonna be achieving our new phosphorus limits early. Got nine years to achieve it. It's gonna be around third year. So by next year, I think we'll be under our new limits for the phosphorus. Really no other big changes in the plant. Staffing, we're a little understaffed right now. We have our lab tech is out. We're short in our positions, so the last couple of months it's been myself and my girlfriend, my same son, operating the plant, so it's been a little stressful there. The one big thing, I think I've talked about it in the past before, is our biosolids program. The biosolids we haul into farmers' fields. Becoming increasingly difficult, last three seasons, spring, last fall, and previous spring. We gotta go on our tank of swift regulations with the weather. It's becoming increasingly difficult. Really taking a hard look at going to the Class A sludge, Class A biosolid. Basically, Lord Night is Milwaukee's version of that that they actually sell commercially. Whether we go that far with it or not, if you go to Class A, there's no more regulations or restrictions on the land. You can put it on, you can put it on your lawn, if it's a percent of pathogen to the really opens up. Where you can put it and it actually reduces the volume by a few percent. So, we'll be hearing more about that in the future. I guess if anybody has any other questions on the report?
Any questions for Todd?
So if we're going with this Class A, does it kind of essentially cost us more to go through or do something?
Yeah, there'd definitely be a new process that would have to be added to the plant. There are benefits because it's gonna reduce some of our hauling costs. Some places actually, they can actually market it and sell it, so to recover some of those costs also. Another thing, you know, one of the fields of the treatment plant, purchasing in the past is cancer fund, which is now being developed. That was kind of one of our fallbacks. We had a wet spring or something, now that's gonna be developed into a commercial asset. We're kind of losing that chunk of land also. So, I think the future is gonna be sooner than later, it's gonna almost be a requirement that treatment plants go to Class A biosolids, just because of environmental concerns and anything like that. So, I think that probably gives you greater efficiency if you're making that kind of investment.
It's an equipment investment or a chemical investment?
There's different processes. Some are chemical, some, there's one that I kinda wanna take a look at too, it's solar. We're just trying to achieve the Class A sludge. So there's a lot of different processes to try to find out which ones are worth adding to your Jefferson.
Good job, Todd. Great. Any other questions or comments? Congratulations on another distiller report, Greg, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, all in favor, on a voice vote of accepting acknowledging the review of the twenty eighteen CMAR, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, no. It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution number eighteen, a resolution authorizing award of contract for the two thousand nineteen North Industrial Park Extension. Alderman Mars, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number eighteen, authorizing the award of contract for the two thousand nineteen industrial park improvements. Whereas the city of Jefferson had received five bids from contractors interested in completing the two thousand nineteen North Industrial Park Improvement Project. And whereas the value of the lowest bidder is included in the following table. Company would be R.G. Houston Company, Inc. Base bid was seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, eighteen dollars and fifty cents. Alternate A extended project is one hundred eighty thousand, one hundred eighty-one thousand eight dollars. Alternate B, PCV water main, three thousand two hundred twenty-nine, excuse me, three thousand two hundred ninety-six thousand. And supplemental bid total was eighteen thousand. Whereas the overall bid includes the scope of work for the extension of the North Parkway, which includes grading, clearing, grubby, clearing and grubby, creation of two regional detention basins, installation of streets, curves, gutters, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and water main. And whereas the money's for in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty thousand has been allocated in the capital improvements fund, storm water utility fund, wastewater utility fund, and money preserved from the two thousand eighteen audit. And whereas the city engineer recommends the award of the base bid rejection of alternate A, acceptance of alternate B, and acceptance of supplemental bid total in the amount of seven hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. And whereas the city engineer recommends extending the North Parkway associated utilities beyond the base bid located, bid location based on unit's price and the budget allows. And whereas the town and country engineer and the city staff review the project bid results and recommends the award project to R.G. Houston Company, Inc. as a low qualified bidder. Whereas the expenses for this project are tax increment district number nine, cost taxable for reimbursements. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council, city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein approves that R.G. Houston Company, Inc. bid for two thousand nineteen North Industrial Park Improvements in the amount of seven hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, and authorizes the city engineer to extend the streets and associate utilities based on accepted unit price as a budget allows. Be it further resolved by the common council, that the city administrators herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or documents associated with the above action on behalf of the city of Jefferson upon review and consent of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved, sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Peachey, thank you. And we'd like to move on, Bill.
I'll take this. So, this project is North of Generac Way. This is the extension of North Parkway for the North Industrial Park. As you're aware, that we are currently out of lots in the North Industrial Park. This project, we have five bids received with R.G. Houston being the low bid. The project with bid with a base bid, an alternate bid for extending the project, and a second alternate to get a credit for using PVC as opposed to the ducted water main. If you take a look up at the exhibit, it's a little bit difficult to see, but essentially down here is the end of the existing North Parkway, North of Generac. Up here is approximately nine hundred linear feet beyond that point, and that is the base bid. And up to this point is another five hundred feet beyond that. That was the extended, that was the alternate. So, originally what we had hoped is that bids would be favorable and we'd be able to extend the project all the way up to this point. However, when the numbers came back, the allotted budget would not, would be exceeded if the, both the base bid and the alternate to extend were approved. So, what our recommendation is to accept the base bid up to this point, reject the alternate, which would extend it up to this point, use PVC instead of the ducted water main, and then take the savings that we have by not using the alternate and simply use the unit prices that have been given to us by R.G. Houston to extend the project beyond this base as far as, as far as budget allows. We're anticipating that's somewhere between another hundred or two hundred linear feet. The point is that at the conclusion of the project for this year, we have a road that's in place, and all utilities are extended up to the same point to be able to open up as much land as we can for future development. The budget not only included the construction of this, but it also included the design engineering as well as inspection during the project, in addition to grading, storm water ponds, and also electric, to be able to put those in there. So, essentially when we're done, we are going to have multiple lots are gonna be able to open up to development in the foreseeable future. And then we anticipate that this will also be extended in the future up to Dewey eventually. And as stated in the resolution, this is part of the newly created tax increment district nine, so these expenses are reimbursable as tax bases received for additional developments. A lot of green, a lot of green.
How much, or how many acres do you think we'll open up for lots construction?
Once this is extended up to Dewey, I think we've got about thirty acres in there. I think these first ones will probably open up about the first ten acres, ten to twenty, ten to twenty acres. And this is not going to be planted originally, so basically the lots can be planted to suit. So if we have a potential business that wants to come in with a plant according to what their needs are.
And Tim, could you just reiterate throughout all of the funding this move occurred?
So, this is kind of a little different than you normally would do these. We're using funds on hand, funds budgeted, to pay for the project that Bill just described. So, we're not issuing bonds to pay for this. So, what I will say is, the storm water component is coming out of our storm water utility. There's a wastewater sewer main extension that's coming with sewer funds, and then the street reconstruction, water extension, and the electric lights and the end of our electrical system, that those are capital improvement funds. So, I just let you know, you know, that's the way the project was budgeted. We're a bit locked into the numbers. The project did bid high, but we're not, we're not quarreling that to do this.
Any questions, move with vigor, Todd. Any concerns?
My only concern is streetlights. Is there any streetlights? We do have one, yes. They're not part of the package with R.G. Houston. We are working with Jefferson Utilities and we do have money allotted to accomplish streetlights on this section. It does not.
We have some costs on that run that warrant consideration, because I share your concern.
A little dark out there.
Yeah, it's very dark out there, especially in May. But, some of the, I just wanted to make sure you guys are still with me, okay? All right. Yeah, if anybody like a Generac or somebody's running a second shift out there, some of those people are walking home in the dark. So, I think that's something that we want to revisit in the near future, but that's not part of this particular issuance tonight. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, then please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name, no opposed.
Alderman Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Chief Members, thank you. Next, resolution number nineteen. A resolution authorizing an award of a bid for the two thousand nineteen sidewalk improvement program. Alderman Horn, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, citizens of Jefferson. Resolution number nineteen. Whereas the city of Jefferson received one bid from contractors interested in completing work for the two thousand nineteen sidewalk improvement program. And whereas the city of Jefferson sidewalk program allows Orlando owners to privately contract to repair damaged sidewalk, or may work with the city of Jefferson to have the sidewalk repaired, as detailed within the city of Jefferson Municipal Code two forty dash four. And whereas of the one bid received, Lions Concrete Construction LLC was the lowest qualified bidder for the concrete sidewalk replacement. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Jefferson authorizes the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Lions Concrete Construction LLC for the two thousand nineteen sidewalk improvement program for the following bid schedule, where unit pricing holds depending on the total quantity of work completed as part of the two thousand nineteen sidewalk improvements program. Due to its length and move reading the existing sidewalk replacement pricing, a complete copy is unfiled at the office of the city clerk and is available for public inspection. I so move.
It's been moved, sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Peachey. Discussion. You all are?
This is the time of the year when we go through with our annual sidewalk program. This year we set it off a bid and received one bid. Once again, it was Lions Concrete. Lions has been the contractor that's done work with the contract as long as I've been here, one or five years. Bids did increase from last year. This year they're going to be between eight seventy-five and ten dollars a square foot. That essentially translates to around a hundred and fifty out of the square on a four-by-four Typically what we have tried to do in the past is to get through the community over a four-year period. Typically what we do is pick a quadrant of the city. Northeast is where we are currently in. We've actually been there for the last couple of years. So, that quadrant essentially is north of Racine Street and east of Main Street. So, essentially we have gone out and marked squares. That was done last week. Letters will be going out to homeowners this week. So those that will have repairs will be getting letters, and they'll either have an X for replacement, or a line on a joint, which means that they either can replace one or both of the squares. And contractors, contractor will be doing the work in August, but the homeowner has the option of either completing the work by a contractor themselves, or utilizing the city's contractor. And again, will be getting them there in August. So, this has been a successful program. Certainly it has improved qualities of sidewalks within the city of Jefferson over several years. And we continue to use the program. We will be looking at installing some new sidewalks as well this year. But homeowners with any questions, can certainly contact me at City Hall, which I'm sure I will get some calls next week when the writers go out.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Any questions?
So, north of Racine, east of, north of East, like?
Main Street.
Main Street.
Main Street, yeah.
Yeah, we've been there a couple of years, so basically at this point, we're on the far west side of that quadrant.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, resolution number nineteen, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name, no opposed.
Alderman Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Chief Members, thank you. This time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five, grant C of the Wisconsin State Statutes to consider hiring a full-time public works crew person and a part-time patrol officer. Just the public works crew person, right? So, Mr. Lars?
Aye.
And Mr. Peachey. All in favor, signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name.
Alderman Tully?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned. We will reconvene, and we will expect to have a resolution. And we are reconvened to open session at this time. Resolution number twenty, a resolution to hire a full-time public works crew person for the Public Works Department. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City of Jefferson, resolution number twenty. Whereas, Public Works Director Pennell intends to fill a vacant position in the Public Works Department for a full-time crew person. And whereas, the open position was publicly advertised and interviews were conducted with potential candidates. And whereas, Public Works Director Pennell is recommending that Mark Richmond of Jefferson, Wisconsin be hired by the city of Jefferson to fill the vacant position. And whereas, the Personnel Committee has reviewed the recommendation of Public Works Director Pennell, and also recommends the hiring of Mark Richmond to the common council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein authorizes the public- that it herein authorizes the public works director to hire Mark Richmond at a starting wage rate of twenty-three dollars per hour, placed in grade four between step six and the maximum on the City of Jefferson Compensation Plan, and be given fourteen days of P T O, year five of service of the City of Jefferson P T O schedule. Upon passing the required medical and drug screenings, employment shall commence no later than July eighth, twenty nineteen. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Fire? Discussion?
So is unanimous at the personnel committee tonight?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the hiring of Mark Richmond for the Public Works Department, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name.
Hold on Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Hold on.
Unanimous, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Peachey?
Say it.
Hold on Lars, on a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned. Good night.